All right, Mr. Chair, just so you know, you are now live on YouTube.
So when we're ready?
We are ready to go. I would just ask that everyone, please remember to be close to your mics when you're speaking, turning them on and off, et cetera. Otherwise, ready to go, Mr. Chair?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 4th. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 4th, 2024 meeting of the City of Lakewood Planning Commission. And welcome back, you all, after a bit of hiatus here. So would you please take roles?
Philip Combs.
Present.
Lynn Larson is excused. Mark Hare.
Present.
Philip Lindholm.
Present.
Ellen Talbot.
Present.
Sharon Wallace.
Present.
Robert Estrada.
Present.
You have quorum.
Thank you. Do we have? Let's see, y'all got a copy of the minutes yesterday? Y'all took a look at them. I will. I will take a motion, please, from someone to approve minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
Oh, second.
Mr. Combs has made the motion. Ms. Talbot has second to approval of minutes dated July 10, 2024. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Thank you. Introduction, please.
Hello, Planning Commission members and Mr. Chair. My name is Angie Silva. I'm Assistant Director for what is now the Planning and Public Works Department for the City of Lakewood. Look forward to working with you, and thank you for being and volunteering your time on an important topic.
Thank you and welcome. Okay. Do we have any updates to the agenda, Mr. Devereaux?
No, Mr. Chair.
Public comments. Mr. Devereaux, no one signed up, and there's no one on Zoom either?
Actually, Mr. Chair, there is, and so I will promote Mr. Josh Friedman to speak under public comment, and then he also, once he's spoken, I will explain what's happened with their written comments as well.
Okay, and before we hear from him, please, sir, remember that this is not a discussion session. The commissioners do not engage in conversation, but do take your comments seriously and under advisement. And as with public comments, we ask that your, well, under the public comments, we ask that your comments be courteous, respectful, and limited to three minutes. And, sir, you're on.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Josh Friedman, and I'm commenting on behalf of LRI. Is the sound okay?
Yes, sir, we can hear you quite well.
Great, thank you. As a refresher, LRI is the city's garbage and recycling services provider, and you might also know it as one of the Lemay and Waste Connections companies. In this capacity, it is listed by the Comprehensive Plan as one of the city's designated public service providers and major utility providers. On tonight's agenda, you're scheduled to begin discussion of the potential 2025 docket for comprehensive plan and land use amendments. LRI has been working with the city's planning department leadership on a draft future land use map designation and code amendment that would reinstate industrial zoning on a part of LRI's property that we think was removed from industrial zoning more or less by mistake. As you'll hear in the coming meetings, as this process gets underway, LRI's sales road property is already industrial in nature, and the larger vicinity and neighborhood around it is also quite industrial in nature. Importantly, the part of the subject property abutting sale road was zoned and designated for industrial land uses from at least 2001 to 2019. The area's industrial zoning and designation were also fully analyzed through the EIS that informed the 2000 comprehensive planning process. However, the easterly part of this property was removed from industrial land use designation and zoning in 2019, potentially by mistake. LRI feels that the upcoming 2025 docket cycle will be a good time to reinstate the previously studied industrial zoning and the matching industrial future land use designation on the area that was downzoned, so that it once again matches the zoning of many of the site's neighbors. This will allow LRI to ensure that a critical piece of its network is available for service if and when it becomes needed as the city and its garbage and recycling needs continue to grow. We look forward to answering any questions and providing any further information you might need in support of our application as this process gets further underway, and thank you for your time in this important planning work.
Thank you, Mr.
And, Mr. Chair, if there's no one else in the chambers, I don't see anyone else that had signed up or was online to speak. But just to give you a little further background regarding what was just testified to, LRI actually approached the city after the closure of the 2024 comp plan process call for public applications, as well as the end of the 2025 call for process applications. And the response from the city when we were contacted was to say, there's an opportunity here to talk to the city council during their 2024 periodic review discussion and/or go and talk to the Planning Commission now for the 2025 process. And so the 2025 process now is just getting started with you. I'll be providing an introduction to you later this evening. And I just want to verify, since I just did what I did. Can you hear me at all?
We can, yes.
I apologize. I think I accidentally messed things up there. Karen, can you start your video? Or are you allowed to? Yes, you should be allowed to. Thank you. I apologize to everybody. That was my fault. So to get back to what I was trying to say, the LRI request came in first at a public hearing that was held recently on the 2024 periodic review. Obviously, you've finished your work on that, and it's in front of the city council. Because of where that process is at and because of the nature of the request, the city staff recommended to LRI to, if they wanted to, they could continue talking to the city council about their request, but at the same time, they could approach the Planning Commission regarding the 2025 cycle to see if this is something that would be taken up as part of the docket. So you have the comments that have been provided tonight by Mr. Friedman orally. I will be sending you in writing the comments that we received this afternoon. In addition to that, but please note that because this was under public comment and not the public hearing, which is scheduled for next time, it is not part of the official public record yet. Presumably, they will be back on the 18th, when you do hold your public hearing, to be added to the official record. But that's just to give you a sense of where it's been so far this summer and where we think it's headed, which is the 24th process at the city council will hold one type of action, but it does not speak to what Mr. Friedman was just requesting, which was rezoning a particular parcel. So I'm happy to clarify that a little bit more. I know that was muddy and talking a lot of different jargon, so please let me know if you have questions.
Questions? No questions. Mr. Friedman did make a presentation or did under public comments last night at the council meeting.
Correct.
So, okay. So we have no questions for you regarding this subject at this time.
Thank you. So the next thing on the agenda, then, would be a presentation that Ms. Silva is actually going to do, but I will be sharing her slides. So get that up for everybody.
So this is under new business, because we did not have, did not have any unfinished business.
Right, you are, sir. Sorry about that. All right, so I believe Ms. Silva is ready to go.
So again, for the record, Angie Silva, Planning and Public Works Assistant Director, or PPW for short, if we love acronyms here. On tonight's agenda, we have proposed code amendments to address some recent state law changes as it relates to Second Substitute Bill 5290, or I'm going to refer to 5290 for short. Next slide, Ms. Beer. So kind of an overview of presentations also included in your packet for this evening will be an overview of 5290, but also additional update goals as part of this code amendment package. The draft code amendments, and we'll do kind of a high flyover summary of what the themes are within those various chapters. Additional implementation needs to ensure success as part of that update, and next steps, and answer any questions you may have at this time. Next slide, please, Ms. Beer. So kind of an overview, Senate Bill 5290 amends Chapter 3670B, which was established in the early 1990s, along with many other state laws, like the Washington State Growth Management Act. And it was intended to really address land use and environmental permit review. And part of this was to ensure coordination, not only with the Washington State Growth Management Act, but also the State Environmental Policy Act, as well as ensure consistency with the Comprehensive Plan. It also recognizes there's a lot of different permit approvals required for development at the state level, at the federal level, but also at the local level, and how we can remove duplication and enhance predictability and streamline where we can. So that's the premise of that overall state statute. In addition to, last year, the Washington State Legislature actually amended this state law substantively, but also little tweaks and changes here. And part of that law went into effect last year, July of last year, but also some big-ticket major changes go into effect in 2025 that are triggering some of these code amendments that we're going to be discussing here tonight. Next slide, please. So one of those major changes includes kind of procedural, and I'll probably put you all to sleep at this, so please, please bear with me. But part of that is permit procedures. When we get an application submitted, what is the requirements at a local level before we start review and issue a decision? And one of those first steps is a determination of completeness. So state law requires local governments like the city to determine a complete application. Doesn't mean approve, doesn't mean to go in the review and make sure it dots all the i's and crosses all the t's and the code requirements, but that it's procedurally complete. They submitted the minimum application requirements to go under review. Under state law and under 5290, we have 28 calendar days to do that initial review. Does not mean we can't request additional information, but we have 28 days to issue to the applicant. We need X, Y, and Z, or you are deemed complete to go under review. Please pay your permit fees and move forward to the next step in the process. In addition to that, procedurally complete does not mean compliance with the code, so I want to make that distinction very, very clear. Another distinction in state law, especially with 5290 changes, includes on the 29th day, if we haven't provided a written correspondent to the applicant, whether they're incomplete or complete, on the 29th day, we have to procedurally deem complete that application and go under review there. Another aspect of state law requires notice of applications for certain application types. This is commonly referred to as an NOA. We currently have these provisions in our code already. It already requires an NOA or notice of application to be issued 14 days after application completeness. However, there were some content changes. We have to reflect that in our local permitting procedures. In addition to that, a last aspect is a notice of decision. Once we issue a decision, approval, denial, or approval with conditions on a permit, we have to issue a notice of a decision for certain application types. Our code is currently silent on this topic or what the contents are. So some of the code provisions you'll see in your packet actually address this head-on, but also what are the contents of that notice of decision, including the process to appeal if one disagrees with it. Next slide, please. Another major change is related to review timelines that go into effect January 1 of next year. These timelines require the city to issue a decision based on application type. Again, a decision could be denial, approval, or approval with conditions to ensure it complies with local development requirements. So our municipal code currently already defines permit types 1 through 5 already. So specifically, 5290 would amend the timelines for types 1 through 3, and I'm going to walk through this a little bit. So on a type 1, this is typically under state law. It does not require that public notice, that notice of application I mentioned before, or a public hearing. It's an administrative decision. It's still appealable, but we would have to issue a decision within 65 calendar days. And these type of permits are typically a design review permit you would find in the downtown subarea plan, a tree removal permit, for example, a shoreline exemption, or a temporary use permit. Another type is type 2, which we would have to issue a decision 100 calendar days after being deemed complete. These would require a public notice like that NOA mentioned before. These decisions are administrative and, again, also appealable, but they would fall in categories such as a CIPA decision, a binding site plan, for example, a shoreline substantial development permit for certain activities within the shoreline jurisdiction, or a short plat. And last but not least, a type 3. This would require not only a public notice, but also a public hearing. Unlike the previous type 1 and type 2s, these would be a hearing examiner decision, which would have a public hearing before the hearing examiner would issue a decision. That decision is also appealable, but we would have to issue that decision within 170 days after application completeness. These types of permits would include, for example, a conditional use permit, a preliminary plat, a major modification to an approved land use permit. Some other considerations to remember about the required timelines. The timelines don't commence, again, until deemed completes. How that all connects in this process or the workflow, if you will. It also doesn't include time. The city would request additional information to ensure compliance with our development regulations, or if a party would like to appeal a decision like a CIPA determination. So Senate Bill 5290 is about land use and environmental permits, so allows local governments to exempt certain application types from timelines and provides examples, but also a specific requirement not to require site plans for interior alterations for a structure under certain circumstances. The city doesn't require this, but there are other jurisdictions that do, like the city of Seattle, for example, in their application submittals. Another aspect important to remember is the law also notes, when not meeting timelines, local governments have to do a prorated permit fee refund. However, this can be avoided if the city incorporates several measures, such as third-party review of applications, adopt regulations that allow housing to be an outright permitted use. Another example identified in state statute is making pre-application conferences optional. So before I submit an application, I want to talk to the reviewers and the parties at the city. What is it going to take for this project to approve, and what standards do I need to meet? And last but not least, another aspect of that would be additional refinements to whether a permit should be subject to a public hearing is another example. So some of these measures are already deployed by the city today, third-party review, for example. A lot of our housing is already permitted outright in many zones, and a lot of the work this body has done through the Comprehensive Plan update process as well. Next slide, please. So last but not least, another major change as part of 5290 is annual reporting. This starts, our first report is due March of next year. We must make available this report to the public, but also submit annually to the Washington State Department of Commerce. This report is required for jurisdictions based on population size, but also if we're a part of a Bill of Land jurisdiction, which the city is. We will need to meet these timelines. In a sense, what these timelines are required, are we meeting what 5290 and that state statute requires? Do we do the notice of completeness within that 29th day? Did we issue decisions for type 1, type 2, and type 3 within the timelines identified? Senate Bill 5290 also requires the jurisdiction after January 1 of 2026, so fast forward. So if we're not meeting those timelines, 50% or more of the time, we must incorporate more measures as part of the next comprehensive update cycle, so something to keep in mind as we look forward to this. Next slide, please. So I mentioned previously, it's not just about complying with state law and manying our code. There's a lot of different aspects that we have to address to ensure we can meet those timetables as envisioned by the Washington State Legislature. And that includes looking at our code and improving usability of it, not just for customers, applicants, but our reviewers. If our reviewers are confused with the standards or how are we going to communicate that effectively to applicants and customers? Another aspect of that is increasing our transparency, but also our accountability. So be transparent. What is the permitting process, and what are the associated procedures and steps to get to that decision point? And last but not least, streamline our processes. Where can we cut process and procedure where there's no added value for compliance to the code or the customer itself? Where can we trim where we can to improve those efficiencies? And one of those concepts is looking at lean six sigma, and I'm going to go over that a little bit later in the slide deck. Next slide, please. So now we're going to go over kind of a high-level overview of the draft code. So there's three different chapters in Lakewood Municipal Code as part of the proposal and in the package for this evening. So kind of the high-level intents for revisions to 18A10, which is our general kind of provisions chapter, if you will, and includes applicable information to a number of permit types. And there's three key themes to the update there. So one is to consolidate, so redirect permit procedures back to 1820. If you look at our municipal code, scattered throughout the 18 series are procedural steps for different applications. As someone who's been in the industry for 20 years, it's confusing to me. How do I know that I'm following the right process to that approval and making sure we're getting all the submittals? The thought here, we have one landing spot that we all go to. What is the appropriate process and procedure for all applications? Second aspect is recognize our department reorganization. Sprinkled throughout our municipal code is references to community development, community and economic development, planning and public works engineering. We're already in these chapters. Let's correct that for planning and public works. And last but not least, clarify, define what interior structure alteration means. Remember, I mentioned before, Senate Bill 5290 requires us not to require a site plan on certain circumstances. We define what that is, but also what those certain circumstances are. Next slide, please. So now we're getting into kind of the meat, potato, or the veggies, as I like to call it, on Chapter 18A20. And this is their administration chapter for municipal code for a lot of different application types. And there's two key themes for the proposed amendments here. A is to identify the required timelines that I spoke of before for type 1 through 3. It also refines the language on what is considered a complete application and the timelines associated with that, as well as revises to a degree, what are the minimum contents of that notice of application or that notice of decision and the timing associated with that. Last, there's some modifications to clarify process on approved permits for major or minor amendments. So this is already a land use permit, for example, that's already been approved, issued out. But weapons, if I want to modify it, what's the difference between the major modification? I'm moving our transportation circulation, reducing the parking, et cetera, versus I'm moving a couple lot lines around, and I don't change substantively the intent of the project. There's no clear process nor definition in our code to guide customers appropriately there. Next slide, please. And last but not least, Chapter 18A30, which really has far less proposed amendments compared to the two previous chapters covered, but this really covers discretionary permits. And most only, the proposed amendments include the allowance of what used to be allowed in our code called administrative conditional use permits. So this would be an administratively-approved permit by the department that could condition a proposed project to be allowed in certain zones. The proposed language in the code amendments doesn't change the permissibility in certain zones or uses. It establishes the framework in which that could be applied for future code amendments, and that's part of the consideration of 5290. Where can we streamline where appropriate? And last but not least, some housekeeping, some ensuring internal consistency, are we referencing the right chapters, the right department, for example, but also redirecting process for permits back to 18A20 as the landing site. Next slide, please. So I mentioned before, kind of implementation needs. Code amendments will not be enough to achieve 5290 timetables. It will take concentrated holistic effort to improve our process, quality, efficiency, and practice and procedures. So I mentioned before kind of the lean six sigma methodology. And folks, if I'm going to take you on a wayback machine, this originally originated with Toyota. Looked at their factory processes, looked, analyzed, defined what they're trying to solve. They measured it, they analyzed it, they designed it, and they verified. This has been tried and true about over 30 years. This can be applied to permitting practices and procedures. I've worked for several jurisdictions, and this is a common practice that is deployed. We haven't done that yet here at Lakewood, and we hope to achieve that. So part of 5290, as mentioned before, is setting new expectations for local government, and we have to look at the system as a whole. And part of this foundation is really looking at what we can do and follow a roadmap for those approvals. So first and foremost, we need to find the problem we're trying to fix and then focus on fixing it, removing variation and bottlenecks in our process, and then monitor to determine, are we achieving the desired outcome? And if we're not, reassess and try something new. With that said, throughout the lean six sigma approach, we cannot forget our audience throughout this process and the significant piece of customer service aspect of our work here at the city of permitting and development services. So part of this is outward facing. That includes website portals, information, and what the processes, what the requirements are, because I get confused about what the Shoreline Management Act may require here, but not over here, for example. Next slide, please. So while some process improvements by its nature are an ongoing, never-ending effort, the department has already embarked on efforts to improve efficiencies. These include, but not limited to, staff training on not only the codes and state requirements in which they are asked to implement during the review, but also to do routine tasks assigned consistently, regardless of who's doing the assignment. This in part also institutes standard operating procedures within the department, or I like to call them SOPs, describing the who, what, where, and why, and how of a particular action to ensure consistency. We need to update and consolidate. We have over 65 applications on our website. Very confusing which application I need to select to do project proposal X. So we need to look at that and how we can consolidate for master applications and be clear about what the submittal requirements are so we can deem that complete within that 28th day. In addition to, we need to improve and expand informational, educational resources that I mentioned before. Some of that is in part on our website, but there's also many other outreach techniques we can deploy, and we're working with our communications office on that. And last, we need to update our internal permitting review workflow to remove those redundancies and institute process efficiencies. This also includes an overhaul of our permitting system. We currently use PALS, which Pierce County and the City of Lakewood are the only agencies in the state of Washington that use this permitting software. The county, like the city, have to comply with 5290. The way our permitting system is structured, the county will need to break PALS to do 5290 and all the reporting requirements necessary to achieve that. So we're currently in communications with the county on exactly what they're working on, but we're also exploring other options as well to do that. In addition to that, I want to give just a ballpark of our permitting system, just to give some context of what's going on. So between February of this year to about August, we had about a little over 1,500 phone calls to the department and over 700 in-person visits, just from our front counter, not someone picking up the phone and calling our reviewers directly, for example. Of these inquiries, 60% of the inquiries were permits already issued, and where am I in the process of the application review, or how do I request an inspection? That's 60% of our customers. That, to me, means the public portal for our permitting system is not giving the information needed to help people to get to where they need to go and to be successful. We need to reimagine what that is and how we can do that more efficiently. Another topic is about the performance reporting. We're going to be required to do this, and we're going to be required to do this regularly. Our PALS permitting system does not calculate average application review times decision beyond the first cycle. And when I say first cycle, it's deemed to complete every review discipline, whether I'm development, engineering, building, fire, planning, for example, has reviewed, provide comments, and we sent it back to the applicant for more information. Cycle one, I can calculate those days. But the thing beyond when they return a recent middle to us, when we start that shot clock and that can, we can't count it. That requires myself and many others within the department to do hand calculations and the time, how long that's been in our system. A permitting agency that has over two thousand permits annually, three thousand permits annually? That's a lot of permits and staff time and resources to calculate to do our performance reporting. We need something better. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, kind of average days of reviews, and these next two slides are just two permit types. This is not the full enchilada, but this is two permit types. So one on the screen right now is the residential building permits. What the permitting system tells me is average days of review. What you see on the different color, on the graphs of the different review disciplines, like building, planning, development, engineering, fire and water. They all have different aspects of regulatory requirements that they're looking at a development proposal to ensure consistency. So we did a couple comparisons, comparisons from this time last year versus year to date right now. On average, you can see building is holding pretty strong at fifteen days to meet that first cycle review. But in comparison, development engineering went from twenty four days to sixty eight days. With respect to development engineering, we have one staffer doing development engineering review. You see where the process improvements and efficiencies are coming. Compare, in comparison, water, again, we're not a full service city. We do partner with outside agencies such as Lakewood Water District. Last year they were at thirty four days, we're currently sitting at seventy eight days. So if this was a type one permit and we had sixty days to issue review. On average, I'm not meeting those timetables. So you see where we need to focus our time, not just on code amendments, but many other operational needs. Next slide, please. So here's just a snapshot on commercial building permits. So this is also multifamily, but it's also retail and services. I won't go through every line, but you can see some of those bottlenecks and similar bottlenecks. But we're also talking about a lot more complicated projects as well. Multi unit, multifamily projects, for example, large square footage of retail space that has a lot of traffic generation. Next slide, please. So with that, we'll go over kind of the next steps in the legislative process, which is a tentative schedule. So I mentioned before that we have to institute some of these changes by the first of the year. A lot of this goes into effect the first of the year, especially those review timelines. So tonight is an opportunity to kind of review the proposal, but ask any questions you may have this time. But the department will recommend to open a public hearing to consider testimony at your next meeting on September eighteenth. Which then following, after consideration of public comment, will deliberate and provide recommendations at your October second meeting. And then we'll head in the next stage and final stage of the legislative process with city council. With a subsequent study session as well as public hearing later in the month of October. With the hope, everything is adopted by November and goes into effect by the beginning of the new year. Next slide, please. So with that, I have probably put you all to sleep because everybody loves process and procedures and the word workflows and permitting software. So with that, I'm happy to hand that back, hand this back over to you, Mr. Chair, and answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Herr.
Thank you for the presentation. I do have two questions. There was a series of assessments that happened. Do those happen concurrently or is it a cascading effort?
Assessments, sir, can you clarify?
Can you go back, the one where you had the twenty three to twenty four comparison?
Are you talking about the permitting?
Yes.
Uh, for residential or building commercial or just general?
Just generally, the, the process is, so does the, the engineer, do the engineers look at it simultaneously with the the fire assessment and the water assessment, or does one have to wait for the other to complete?
Great question. It's, I, I'm going to step back a little bit. It's part of kind of the parent and child permit. So if a particular proposed project requires land use approval, for example, that land use approval can, needs to be completed before we issue your construction permits. And your construction permits are your earthwork and your structural permits. So that's your, your site development permit and your building permits essentially. So yes, can we consolidate review and do review simultaneously on multiple applications or multiple review disciplines in one application? Yes, but it's like the chicken and the egg. We got to complete this before we get these permits out the door.
Right, thank you. And then the next question I have is obviously, we, we've determined that we need to make a change, right? But are there benchmark, uh, key performance indicators already identified where we know we are? We, we saw one chart there, but um, do you, have you identified those key performance indicators and benchmarked them so that we know we can assess our improvement with the implementation of this program?
Great question. So part of the city's uh, biennial budget process, there are performance measures as part of that. And the many different programs and portfolio of services that the city provides. Permitting is part of those benchmarks. If you look at the current budget book for twenty three, twenty four, there's permitting benchmarks. So first cycle review goal for building and uh, building residential permits is twenty eight days. So if you looked at that chart I had for residential building, we're not, on average, we're not meeting that. We're more at forty days for first cycle review. When it comes to our required performance reporting, Department of Commerce, the statute doesn't, I don't identify exactly whether some of those data points as part of that performance reporting. But that statute also directs Commerce to develop guidelines and a template of what that report will look like. And they're still in process of that. I think they're coming out with a preliminary draft for comment in the next couple of weeks for jurisdictions to react to before they finalize it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your presentation today. This may be dry to some folks, but it's incredibly important for how the public interacts with the city. Uh, this is a very basic way that a lot of our folks interact and that experience is important. I'm a big fan of those pre-application meetings. I think they really get people on the same page. You mentioned those are optional, or they will be optional. Are they an option now?
They're not, great question. They're not an option in our current code. What fifty two ninety recommends is unless they're really required, make them an option. But you can still encourage them as a really great way. So part of the code amendment package does revise the language for optional. But it also proposes another path for customer service meetings. So under pre-applications, they're very formal. You bring in all the review disciplines. We have information on the proposed project at that time and we react to what is before us and go here, you know, under LM C did it, we will require this, this, this. But there's a lot of informal customer conversations that happen Monday through Friday with applicants or prospective applicants all the time. What is proposed in the code is opening a pathway for additional customer service needs beyond that formal pre-application meeting that requires a meeting summary. A lot of staff resources go into and go, no, I just need to meet with planning. I need to meet with building and I need to reconcile whatever request for information or what is the path forward to success? And then compliance with the code, right? We're trying to ensure compliance with a comprehensive plan in the code. That's why we amend the code to establish policies and understanding in those side frame, sideboards. As a reviewer, we're tasked to implement what that is.
Yeah, I think that's exactly it. And I, I think there may well should be a fee for those application meetings. As you said, they draw upon a lot of staff resources. But I know a lot of folks who would pay that hundred dollars or that two hundred dollars to save themselves two months of just trying to figure it out. Or to get down the line, having filled out all the paperwork and then realize this department over here has an issue that I can't get past.
Yep, couldn't agree with more.
Yeah, just to tag on that comment too, I, I highly agree. I mean, pre-app, pre-app meetings are invaluable for that reason, but also I think for the city's tracking. Comment tracking to ensure that the adequate, that the information that was given at that time was adequate. And it's, it remains documented in that um, letter. And I think that if and however it becomes a um, a staffing resource need to um, keep on top of those pre-application meetings, that also, you know, that also uh, speaks to maybe the organization, middle structure of the department and, and meeting that demand. The other um, comment I wanted to make that I think is, is also important is I noticed on the city's website, the development services page is capable of being translated into other languages, which is, which is great. But the actual documents themselves, the handouts and the um, application walkthrough documents, which are invaluable tools for people to be able to access information beforehand, those are not translated when you, you know, when you pick your selected language, you can't, uh, you, you still need to translate that document. So I would, I would suggest that as you go forward, that uh, you know, staff can decide whatever it is, what, what are the key applications or most frequent or um, whatever there are, whatever key documents there are. Uh, but they should be translated in multiple languages primarily because the construction industry, we've all worked with it and on this panel. I think we know that it's highly bilingual and, and or limited English proficient. And so as a means of ensuring that the city and the staff's time is being adequately um, and, and wisely spent and productively spent in reviewing, that it's easier, you know, it helps streamline the process too, when you um, when you put those materials in, in, in other languages so that it's clear what, what your development guidelines, expectations um, code is. So just wanted to express that too.
That's really great feedback. And we have been looking at a number of different kind of, part of the applications, like a PDF fillable format, right? Is that the best way to provide application seminars? If you look at some permitting softwares, you don't even need that aspect and that translation service is already incorporated. Does it come with a fee? Yes, it costs money. But we're looking at whatever we can and within our resource levels to get to that point. And thank you for bringing that up because that's part of some of those efficiencies, right? That we've been talking about.
Mr. Collins.
I think I agree with everybody so far, this is scary.
I, I would just say it's refreshing hearing some of this stuff come out of your mouth because it's not something that is and all of you work with other jurisdictions, these are not, this is not the dialogue that typically happens. And I think this House bill is, is what was intended and so on is to help draw some attention to it. And you could easily satisfy it or you could embrace it and see what it is intended for. So I'm encouraged, you know, for permitting and applications, I, I follow the ABCs. Is it affordable? Is it brief? And is it um, clear, yeah? Is it clear or simple? And if it doesn't have those things reasonably, then are we really outward facing? And so those are the things that I kind of filter through. It looks like everything here is following, following that. I, I didn't see affordability in there. I think that's always a subjective one too, so it's hard to pin down. Um, but you did mention Toyota and six sigma. And I guess as you're moving forward, when you got a lot of change, someone's going to come up and say, you know, I got an idea, I got the, you know, I'm concerned. Toyota has a safety measure where something's going wrong, any employee down on the floor can pull it. And then someone comes to check and see, all right, is this something we need to stop production for? I would think something like that here too, where we just stop and evaluate if any staff member, and hopefully everyone does feel comfortable. You know, as we're going forward, making those comments and changes, whether it's a customer, whether it's a council, council, or whether it's a, just an employee. But I'm encouraged, these are all very positive things and I appreciate you coming prepared. And I've seen other cities working on this exact same thing. And I don't think they've done as good a job.
Appreciate that. And I also welcome the planning commission again, through your experiences, through hearing the voices in the community at the end that we serve, right? If you're hearing feedback on how we can improve customer services to the best of our ability, I can't change the rules once they're adopted. But what I'm here for and what staff is here for, and they're dedicated towards that, is to explain the best of their ability, what those rules are, and to find the path within the sideboards that we have to operate, right? So if there are areas such as language translation services for those PDF copies, is there a better way? Please bring that forward to the department because at the end of the day, we are here in service of the community. How can we provide better services with the resource levels that we do have?
Ms. Wallace.
Good, quick question, uh, piggybacking on what comment Mr. Herr had regarding the sequence of events in the permitting process? So do our applicants or our customers, are they fully aware of the sequence? For example, that uh, this department has to buy off before the other one buys off before the other, are they out fully aware of this?
No, I think there's a lot of confusion, sir.
Okay.
Um, especially when it comes to CIPA determination. So there's certain projects that are exempt from CIPA, right? The State Environmental Policy Act, where we don't need to issue a decision, a determination of significance, a determination of non-significance, or a mitigated determination of non-significance. Most people don't know what that means. They don't know the public noticing requirements associated, but also the aspects of what needs to be filled out in that CIPA checklist and how to mitigate against probable adverse impacts. It's a conversation we have Monday through Friday through our planner of day services, but also during the application review. Most people don't understand, we have to issue that CIPA determination. But development engineering on traffic impacts needs to provide feedback so we can mitigate against those impacts on the community. Or environmental, if there's a wetland and a buffer and reduce buffer protections, what are the, what's the mitigation plan? That needs to be completed before we can issue that. What's unique here at the city compared to other jurisdictions, I've heard um, some comments that submitted applications at different jurisdictions. Permit processes are different at many different local governments. While the city's permit process mirrors to a degree, kind of Pierce County, which was the jurisdiction I worked at before coming to the city. It's very different compared to others, where CIPA is not a standalone application. It's incorporated into your conditional use permit process. And those are kinds of things that we are exploring. Is that a better way for customers to do that? Another thing is looking at as consolidated review. And I mentioned, we, we do that already. But where, how our permit system, and this mirrors Pierce County's process as well, our permit system, if development engineering is done with their review and they have requests for information, they submit it back and the applicant gets pinged. But that doesn't mean building or planning or all these others may be done. So the applicant can start working on the development engineering. But some of those review comments may be impacted by what building and planning, but you're still waiting for that feedback. Some jurisdictions, not all, do consolidated review comments. When everybody's done with their review, a consolidated review comment letter is pinged back to the applicant. Here is all the information is needed to move forward in the process. Here's your point of contact for clarification. Please resubmit all of the information to get this back under review so we can get to that approval stage of the process. Those are the type of process improvements we are talking internally. Whether they're the most effective for the community in which we have to serve, that's part of the dialogue and conversation. And I do agree wholeheartedly, it will take all of us to make this happen. So staff who are in the trenches, who are interacting with customers, who have to implement the codes, they are critical to the success of all of this. And their voices, as well as the customers and council and planning commission are part of that dialogue.
So you bring to the table best practices from other agencies. So we're hoping that those best practices can be in fact implemented uh, into our day to day.
Everything has a pros and cons, right?
Yes.
And that's part of the discussion dialogue. What does the pros outweigh those cons?
Have questions? No other questions? Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your presentation. And where do we stand now, Mr. Spear?
Mr. Chair. Sorry, Tiffany, please.
Um, now that this conversation is done, then I will be making a present.
Um, now that this conversation is done, then I will be making a presentation to you regarding the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Amendment docket. So if you're ready to proceed, so am I.
We are. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So once again, I'll share my screen here just a moment. Can you see that all right? I know it's not presentation mode, but can you see it?
We can see it.
Okay, sorry, one second. Oh, for heaven's sakes.
Delete.
I'm sorry. Try that again. When everything goes smoothly in practice. And then doesn't when you're here. All right, we'll just go as is. So uh as I just mentioned, this is now, um you've had um six weeks or so to clear the palate of the 2024 periodic review, the 10-year process that actually took two years of your time uh to do a complete review of the city's comprehensive plan and regulatory codes. Uh, we are now looking at just a general annual uh docket list process. So for those of you who are new this year to the planning commission, the city of Lakewood has a schedule from July roughly to July of each year, where in the fall of year one, there is a a call for uh general public as well as city-initiated amendments proposed either for zoning or text uh policy or regulation changes. And then uh what we're doing tonight is to review what was submitted as applications or suggested by either city staff or the city council to be included on the docket. This process will not be any sort of substantive review of any of the uh ideas or or application items. It is instead to literally just say, these are the things that will be talked about. So your normal process, you're gonna have this study session, and then the next meeting is a public hearing, and the following would be when you would take action on this um recommendation up to city council. They will do their same study session, uh public hearing in action. And then once that is completed by before the end of this year, we will have then an established docket of however many amendments that now pu- planning and public works would pick up and say, okay, for the ones that are privately uh submitted and initiated, we would review the applications as submitted, do the environmental analysis and make recommendations back to you next spring as to whether those are consistent under the Growth Management Act, consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, et cetera. And then if it is a a city-initiated amendment, a similar process, but it may be that um it's a request, for instance, from the city council that the department then flushes out and drafts and then provides again that environmental analysis and recommendation back to you. Uh, so next spring, it will be back in front of you as the actual substantive content of each one of these amendments. You would again have your study sessions, your public hearing, and then make a recommendation to council. And the way this year's calendar is going to go, there are a number of these that are actually going to be required under state law and need to be completed before uh the end of twenty of June 2025. So this schedule is gonna be a little bit accelerated to what would otherwise happen. And I anticipate that uh the planning commission would be taking action next uh April or May, and then it moves on to council. So all of the deadlines at the state level of completion by the end of June 2025 will be met. So uh I just mentioned the basics, but but here there's also within our own code at the city, things that the uh the, excuse me, that the code requires. CIPA or State Environmental Policy Act review. The Department of Commerce also does its review, the planning commission does its work, and then the council. Uh, we did do our public call for applications in July of 24. There were no private applications submitted during that period of time. However, as you heard uh earlier this evening from LRI representative uh and what I mentioned afterwards from his comments, there is now a private application that will be um in front of you next uh meeting as part of your hearing to consider whether you would want to incorporate that into the docket. And again, this is gonna be a slightly accelerated schedule to be finished by mid 2025 at the council. Mentioned already that we are looking at simply the list of the docket versus the substance at this point. So reviewing what um are required or recommended at this point to be included on the docket because of state requirements. The first one is uh regarding what is called co-living housing. Once upon a time, this was maybe called um SRO, single-room occupancy type living, uh but essentially under state law, and again, this is echoing some of the the information and priorities from the legislature you've heard about, again, going back to the 24 process. But trying to make sure local governments are allowing as many different types of housing options as there uh is possible, including co-living housing. So uh by the end of next year, the city needs to have development regulations that allow co-living housing on any lot that allows at least six multifamily residential units. And so we will be drafting this information to comply with what is required under uh the Bill E. Excuse me, Engrossed Substitute House Bill 1998 regarding co-living housing. The second recommended amendment is again responsive to state law change and requirements. This is actually the start of a six-year uh schedule. So House Bill 1181 actually requires six years' worth of work. And so what's in front of you now and what the council will consider to include on the docket is just the first two years of that six-year process. And it requires uh climate change and climate resiliency to be incorporated into local regulations as well as its comprehensive plan. So this next two-year process is for the capital facilities, the park and recreation, and the utilities elements specifically. And there are, again, within the bill, specific requirements that need to be uh addressed in the draft. So this will be brought forward uh substantively once the docket is completed. The third amendment is an add-on to what you've already seen uh in 2024 uh periodic review. So House Bill 1110 required not only um the allowance of a certain type of additional housing types within single-family areas, but it is also saying that the regulations that are in place for those types of housing have to meet certain standards first and foremost, that um they are no more strict than would be required for single-family homes. So we will be again drafting something that is responsive to the bill. It will be in front of you early next year, uh as this is already underway and we need to get things done per grant requirements as well as the code cycle. But it will be incorporated into next year's docket. The fourth, another state law requirement is to um just update the definition of multi-unit residential buildings. Pretty straightforward, but again, it's a requirement that we must follow. The fifth recommendation is related to parking. And there was a Senate bill that was passed this year. Uh, it's a number of regulatory specifics. I won't read them all. Uh, but it's pretty clear that there are certain things now that the state law is saying local governments can or not or cannot require. And so all of these would be incorporated into language that would be dropped into the city's code once uh the docket was finalized next summer. Uh, one more is just to update in our code. Uh, we did, if you'll recall, some of you, a complete rewrite of our Title 18 Development Regulations in 2019. And as that process happened, uh, it's taken a while to notice this, but we actually have found that there were some unintentional omissions regarding uh civic uses within the code. And so this is to reinstate the language that never should have been taken out. It was done in error. The final one that is um required, this is regarding the city's commute trip reduction plan. So this is getting to uh what is called transportation demand management in state law. In other words, uh discouraging single occupancy vehicle travel, encouraging shared transportation of whatever type, and also non-motorized transportation. The city is required to update its current CTR plan and have a new one in place that that would be in effect from June of 2025 through 2029, mid 29. And so uh we are actually working on that now. And again, this will be incorporated in the docket because it is uh something required to be finished by uh mid 2025. There are now also in this list several tentative, I'm calling them, um items. And uh one of them relates to the ability for uh the city of Lakewood to consider uh establishing a sales and use tax deferral program. And what it would do is encourage commercial buildings to be converted into affordable housing. It is obviously a policy choice that our city council needs to address. Uh, and so assuming, let's say that the council thought this was a good idea, they looked at the sales and use tax, um then there would need to be this follow-on to make sure that uh the code and the zoning and uh mapping all reflects this decision to allow the conversion of of commercial buildings into residential use. Another tentative, if you'll recall, in recent meetings with uh Council Commissioner Larson, he mentioned a couple of things that he thought would make sense in terms of subarea planning. So this is one of those. Uh, we do currently have in Lakewood's comprehensive plan, a policy that supports uh new subareas, specifically uh areas, quote, such as Springbrook, downtown, the Pacific Highway Southwest Corridor, and selected residential arterials. So that is the language that is in the current comprehensive plan. What Commissioner Larson is suggesting is that we actually take a look at this. It would be uh action by the city council if they were wanting to include this as the docket uh in the docket, to direct the department to start working on updates to the subarea plan for the station district and its boundaries in order to incorporate areas uh that are just outside of, just to the north of the current station district boundaries. There is also come from Commissioner Larson, a discussion that started during the 24 process, and now we're into the 25 docket, to take the current comp plan policy regarding developing an individual identity for the international district through a variety of means, and actually taking that a step further and creating uh a I don't know if it would qualify as a full subarea under the state law as that is defined, but taking action to formally uh change zoning and or regulation in an area described by Commissioner Larson as the district or area north of Silicon Boulevard and west of South Tacoma Way as a sub-area plan. So this again is, if it is something that first the planning commission and then the city council agreed to as a docket item, uh we would be as a department taking a look at what exactly this could flesh out to be, and that would come back in front of you next spring for further consideration.
Ms. Spear?
Yes.
Go back one place to 10. Is that area right now considered the international area?
It is part of it, but it is not all of it.
Not all of it, okay.
So the legislative process, again, to kind of wrap things up for this topic, uh on our next meeting schedule is the public hearing on the proposed docket list. And then it would move forward from you on October 2nd to council. At this point, they would be taking action November 4th to set the actual docket list. Over the winter and into early spring, the department would be doing all of the environmental review of all of the approved docket items, and then it would be coming back to you in spring, and council would again take action before uh the end of June in 2025. So at this point, uh this is just a high-level review. There'll be a little bit more detail provided to you for the hearing next uh meeting. But otherwise, uh that's the process. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Ms. Spear, can you go back to uh 2025 08, please?
Sure. Oh, that's the wrong one. Again, I did it again. Oh, eight?
Eight.
Okay.
Affordable housing and commercial buildings. Uh, that is, I understand it is allowed now, uh for example, the Maureen Howard facility there on on Pack Highway, but are we saying that this now would include a retail sales and use tax deferral for future?
Um, slightly different animal. The conversion of the hotel to uh the Maureen Howard Emergency Housing Shelter was done through the purchase and change of use from a hotel, which is a commercial use, to an emergency shelter, which is not a quote affordable housing residential project. This is talking more of um a market or a mixed-rate project where you don't have um how to say it, it's it's not a completely shelter project. This could be just private occupants as well as those that may be at various income levels and might need some financial assistance, but it is not, for instance, a shelter. And this would be more than just taking a hotel, converting those rooms into occupancy for shelter. It would be, for instance, taking a strip mall, converting the building, doing the additional needs interior-wise to make it livable as units uh and and moving from there. And as a result, this would have effects on zoning because as of now, there's areas where commercial uses are allowed and residential are not, or vice versa, and this would also require some of that to be re-examined.
Anyone have questions for Ms. Spear? Okay, Ms. Spear, thank you very, oh, Estable, please.
I just wanted to get clarity because maybe I missed it. So if if in order to consider LRI's request, do we need to take any action tonight to incorporate their request?
No, uh what will happen is I will provide to you the written common that comments that they submitted to me this afternoon because they missed the timeline to get it over to you before the meeting. But it is considered public comment. It is not part of the public hearing. And so I would assume that in two weeks, uh Mr. Friedman or someone else from LRI will be back in order to provide formal public comment. And then it's your decision, the meeting after that, to decide whether you want to incorporate that request into this list. Right now, it's not included, but before you would take action, that would be a decision for the commission to make.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Spear. No further questions. So where do we stand now?
Uh, I don't believe Mr. Boki is there, so I don't think there's any city council updates. Um, but I just did want to provide to you uh an update about the 2024 10-year process that you were so involved in for so long. We have now had three study sessions and two public hearings at the city council. Next Monday will be their final study session, and so two weeks from Monday on September 16th, they are at this point scheduled to take final action. And once that occurs, there will be a lot of internal uh departmental preparation for an effective date, we think, of January 1st. That will be um coordinated with a lot of what you heard tonight from Ms. Silva regarding our 5290 requirements. Uh, and so come January 1, if you're a permit applicant, fingers crossed, it's gonna be a very different experience and a better experience for you. And there's gonna be all of the um zoning and regulatory changes in place and ready to go uh that you worked with on the 24 periodic review. Other than that, I'm sorry.
I have one question for either yourself or Ms. Silva. Did uh did the library receive their occupancy permit?
Great question. We've been in contact with the library on their interim site daily. Uh, they have requested their final um inspections for mechanical as well as their building. They've already got signed off on their planning landscaping requirements with a performance bond associated with that. And both the director, Jeffrey Mack, and myself will be doing the final inspections tomorrow to get them where they need to go.
Wow, okay. Getting close, getting close. Thank you. Anything for the good of the order, Ms. Estable?
I just wanted to say, um, I I've, I sent this to Tiffany aside privately, but I wanted to congratulate Lakewood and its staff for receiving the RACE grant. Um, I don't think that that little tidbit made the uh city manager newsletter, but I think it's worth acknowledging you all because um that's a hu- first of all, the city received a million dollars at least for planning for the downtown subarea plan. That's huge. It's huge to receive that type of grant. It's great to see Lakewood um receive some recognition in DC. Um, and so whoever worked on that, uh congratulations and nice job, and I And I look forward to seeing that plan come to us and just good job. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Talbo. And just a little more background there. When uh we applied the first time around, I was involved in drafting it of, of the application along with the then Public Works Director, Paul Busic. We did not get it the first time, which is not a surprise. Most applications are not approved their first time through the process. But this was year two. We did a debrief with the federal department after the first one was rejected to understand why. And the tweaks that we were able to pick up based on their recommendations and a slight change to the focus of our grant uh made us successful on our second try, which is also pretty rare. Uh, so thank you very much. I, I appreciate your, your recognition of that.
Okay. So see anything else on the table?